Agenda review and disposures, is there anything to add?
I do not have anything to add or take away.
Okay. Minutes of November 1st.
Hi, who would take up a minute? I just had a quick question. Phil, was that accurate, how many detected?
This one.
Did you say you said?
Uh, second page?
Uh, yeah, it says on stage four under the COVID update. Second frame. Is that what you would say? Can you hear me?
It's whatever.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I remembered it, but I just wasn't sure if it was exactly what I meant. Okay.
Okay, so Grant, you made a motion to accept this written?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mary, do you think?
Mike's not even on Zoom.
No.
No.
Where is it at?
All right. Privilege of the floor, number one. I'm just happy that you brought back number two. Hey, I do what I can. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Anyone on Zoom land? Do I salute anyone on Zoom?
I don't see anyone.
Right. Perfect. We're gonna move on to our... Is there anyone?
Not yet.
Okay. We're gonna move on to our principals' report.
Good evening. I am going to give a brief principals' report because the budget presentation is pretty lengthy. So I feel that you're pretty up to date with how things are going on in the building. I will let you know that our enrollment is holding steady at about 370. I wanted to let everyone know that we're moving ahead with implementing the DESA program, and the letters for notification about DESA will go home in the report cards on Wednesday. That is an opportunity for parents to get a little bit of information about DESA, which is a social emotional screening. Parents have the option to opt out of that, and that's the notification. And then the parents will let us know if they would like to opt out of that program. I want to give you a little more information about what DESA is. So it's a social emotional screener. Each classroom teacher will complete eight questions regarding each student in their homeroom. Questions such as, does this student have conflict with their friends? Never, sometimes, occasionally, or often? And then we'll use that information to help kids develop skills. To then develop... Mr. Sheehan and the student support team will then work with the kiddos who are having specific struggles. I think that's enough for you, just to have a broad understanding of that program. I'd like to do a couple of student shout-outs. Rose Antman for starting the new Helping Hands Club, which is off to a total success. Started today. So thank you to Rose for absolutely making that happen herself. She is a powerhouse of a young lady. Zoe Artazoni received the third grade care award. Andrew Vales Babalonia received the fourth grade care award. And Brooke Olson-Dulittle and Eva Pike each earned or were recognized for their caring behavior in the fifth grade. Would like to thank the Jingle Bell Run volunteers, Charlotte DiCosta, Emily Nichols, Izzy Allen, and Anthony Torres for coming out this past Saturday. It's great to see the eighth graders there supporting the program. Like to do some teachers and staff shout-outs. Sarah Samborn for heading the Jingle Bell Run event with Frank Gonzo's board member and Chris Valenti, wife of a board member and parent to Plymouth Elementary School kids. The Jingle Bell Run was a huge success. We not quite doubled the number of participants, but had a great turnout and raised good money. We are able to offer all the scholarships that were requested. So that's fantastic news. I'd also like to shout-out for Liz Parmally for coordinating the Helping Hands Club. So she's helping Rose with that club. She's doing a great job. PTA, we'd like to thank them for the Mitten Tree and the Mitten Tree donations, keeping kids' hands warm, hands and heads. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that the PTA has decided to launch a staff and teacher shout-out. So they will be sending out a Google form to staff members so that we can recognize any particular individuals who are doing, going above and beyond, or taking extra time for kiddos. The PTA is very much supportive of our teachers and our staff. So that's an exciting new way to do some staff shout-outs. We also wanted to let everyone know that we are requesting gently-used winter gear for students of all ages. In order to keep our kids outside this winter, we need gear. So if you have any in your home and would like to send it in, it'd be great if it came in clean, but we could wash it if we needed to. I'm gonna skip over a number of things I usually report out on and just let you know that the parent-teacher conferences went well in November, as did the PSAT exams, and our Veterans Day ceremony was wonderful. Wanted to let everyone know about some upcoming events. Winter Concert is the 21st. We are breaking that down into two smaller groups. So our kindergarten and first grade will be in one group, and our second and third graders will be in another group, so that we will have less people in the gymnasium in order to spread people out. Winter Program is set to go on January 6th. As I said, all scholarships are granted, and it looks like every student will get their first choice as well. So that's a huge success. Thank you to Amy McKenney and Beth Wilkie and Jenny Lee for making Winter Program happen. And wanted to let everyone know that report cards go out this week on Wednesday. So look for those in your students' backpacks and envelopes. And that is my report.
Hi. I too will remain brief because of the budget. Just quickly on athletics, all of our winter teams are now in session and looking good. I want to greatly thank our families, parents, for filling out all of the permission forms and giving us the physical information in a very timely manner. That's a huge help and allows our coaches to start their season without chasing paperwork. So we have, all of our athletes are all set there. Our fifth and sixth grade teams have already had a couple of games under their belt. They show some great enthusiasm. They're fun to watch. And overall, we have just under 100 athletes participating in basketball, nordiski, and wrestling. And really, no updates on the safety committee, other than just mentioning, we've already done seven drills this year, had four Informicast tests, and over the colder months, we usually look to do another secure classroom drill and test the Informicast app again. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Privilege of the floor, number two.
You have one, Jenny?
Okay. Hi, Jenny.
Hi. How are you? Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Oh, and yeah, that's my life. I just wanted to say thanks to everyone for Winter Program. I've been getting big spurts from Amy and Tanya through the PTA, and it's been awesome being able to have it happen this year. So thanks to everyone involved for that. And then I also just wanted to say that we've been working with Tanya to make sure that line quest, right? That's what it's called?
Yes.
Happened this year. And we were hoping to get it in as a line item, knowing that the budget is a scary thing. I just wanted to note that it's a very important thing that the clinic offers to the students. So it would be great if I could stay with the budget. And that was it.
Perfect. Thanks, Jenny.
Is there any?
Is there any? All right. Is there anyone else? Are you going to take our input after we review budget stuff? Um, yeah, I feel like, right? Or tonight's really just a general information, though? And then next month, we go into more detail? Do you want feedback? I don't know. You tell me what you want feedback. Let's wait on feedback, only because it's the general view, and things may change based on, you know? So we'll wait until next meeting. And we'll make sure that the privilege of the floor is underneath that for you. Thank you. Okay? All right. Good deal. Thank you. All right. So discussion?
Is it usually after the discussion items?
Yeah, I just threw a second one on because that was the feedback that I got that after the principals' report, they wanted to add a second privilege of the floor. So I just happened to put it there, but we can move it around at any time. People just wanted a second chance to be able to speak their minds, so I thought it was important to bring back. So let's move on to discussion items. COVID update.
Okay. So I received a call today around noon from the vaccination van saying that they could not staff the clinic. So we quickly sent out an alert to all parents. We had a really great turnout the last time. They wanted us to use the fixed site, from my understanding. It was pretty backed up this afternoon, but it is a site that is open Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sunday, which I put out on the message on the phone today, and it's on our SAU website as well. So I think it's been pretty quiet there as far as folks that need to walk in. They have all three vaccinations, boosters, and the doses for the five to 11-year-olds as well, so.
Excuse me, where is that?
Common man.
Is that the common?
It's in one of their function rooms there, so.
Okay.
But I did hear today, they were obviously, there's, I don't know how many people are staffed down there. I don't think very many. There's only two giving vaccinations and one at registration. And if they got the crowd that we got the last time, I'm sure people are still waiting. So just wanted to be aware of that. It changes fairly quickly. I know that parents have been having a little bit tougher of a time getting an appointment as far as either testing or for vaccinations. It just is hit or miss as far as who has availability and who doesn't. We sent out an email last week, I think it was, from the state of New Hampshire, had free at-home testing kits, and those were sold out, I think, by that evening. So those went pretty quickly. So people obviously took advantage of that. I don't know if something will be coming out again. Hopefully, there'll be access. That's just been sometimes the issue. We like to have kids tested and back, you know, if it's not a COVID issue. So we're just watching absenteeism rate. We're obviously watching the information about the different variants that are coming in right now. We have sporadic cases. On Mondays, we tend to report out higher cases, just because a lot of what's coming in is from the weekend or from students that have been quarantined with close, it seems like, other family members that have tested positive. So Monday seems to be a spike typically. And we're at about 10 days after Thanksgiving, so I don't know if that would be an increase. We do not have any clusters or outbreaks at this point, but there has been a number of outbreaks and clusters throughout the state. So many schools are dealing with that at this point. Remember, the threshold is pretty low for an outbreak. It's just two clusters, so, you know, three cases related to different clusters. I don't have anything else at this point. We're just keeping an eye on it. And right now, you have in place masking if you do have a, to require masking if there's a cluster or outbreak identified. I just wanted to be clear, so some of the districts, it's funny what that impacts when you think about it sometimes. If you have a cluster or a outbreak, some of the schools have said first, you know, so concerts might be masked because they're, you know, if there's an outbreak. But sports, there's different opinions on it. Some of our schools are, if there's a cluster and outbreak, there's gonna be required masks for spectators and if you're on the bench, but if you're in active play indoors, they're still not, masks will be optional for wrestling and for basketball. So that's just something, I don't know if you want to discuss that. I just think it's, because it has come up so quickly, and that's something that we've kind of left out, well, we didn't really decipher between the two.
What didn't we do last year for wrestling? I know that was a big topic of discussion.
The problem with the wrestling is they're not, they don't, they're off anyways. I mean, they're, and the timing of the matches is fewer than 15 minutes typically, so that's the close contact piece. So that's what's the discussion at the NHIAA and with coaches and stuff like that, so.
Last year was mandated across the board.
So, NHI, yeah, that's right.
It's all very different.
Very different.
So we could do mandate for the fans.
Well, so that's what, that's what some of the districts are doing. So if they, for the, so you can do masking for fans, this is only if there's an outbreak or a cluster, for fans and for kids on the bench. When they sit down and they're right next to each other and not within six feet, then they can put it on. But when they go out, they can take it off, and it would be for those two.
Are any schools limiting spectators? We did that last year.
We are not limiting spectators, and I have not heard of any districts limiting spectators at this point.
And there's no seating, spacing, or anything? I would motion that we, spectators, wear masks.
So that, all the time or just during?
No, what do you mean?
I'm talking about when there's a cluster or a outbreak.
I would agree towards the same, honestly.
For clusters or outbreaks?
No. I don't know. Were you thinking all the time or only if there's a cluster in the school?
I don't know.
I think if the fans are inside and are not socially distanced, because I mean, if you're in the gym, you're watching basketball game, you're going to spread out.
I would not overcomplicate it, just because I would either require them or not. Right now, it's just recommended, so people, I mean, most of, I would say, when I walk in this building during the day, you know, most are masked for faculty and staff, right? Am I right on?
Faculty and staff, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, the adults, but as far as fans, it's a mixed bag of who does what. I was just asking more on clusters or outbreaks to clarify that, but.
I mean, I think to keep it consistent with the language that we have now for in school, if we keep it that masks are gonna be required if there's a cluster or an outbreak, and make that consistent with sports, then that makes sense to me.
I agree. In the case of a cluster or an outbreak, though, would like inter?
What sports happen?
Would sports be suspended, like inter-school competition be suspended?
So the only time, I've dealt with this more at the high school, the only time that we've had to add additional mitigation strategies from the Department of Health is if it had to do with the sports team, and it just had to, you know, basically, it dealt with being outside more often, maybe holding off on a few practices to see what's up with the contact tracing, so they can figure that out, or, you know, just the staggered locker room times.
I guess what I'm asking, we've had games canceled, like, because there've been COVID cases, you know, playing on an opposite team. So we haven't played.
Right. That is not the case this, anymore. So we are playing other, I mean, it is pretty, it's substantially spread, so we have, we're just playing if they could play. Sometimes the teams will say, we're not coming because we have an issue. But they're usually pretty honest about what kind of issues they're having. Are the elementary schools, middle schools honest about that?
Oh, yeah. And I took a phone call last week of a school that is not able to play us here because we don't require masks, and their school does. So their board said, can't go to PBS. But in the interest of helping kids, we're gonna go to them twice, and we're gonna follow their protocols of wearing masks.
So we've basically been playing, you know, your house, your rules kind of deal?
Correct.
Because there's, districts are all over the map with what they, what they do.
So, I mean, if school, how many schools have said that? They're not gonna come because we don't require them?
One.
Is it Marissa?
No. I would make it simple. I wouldn't overthink this, because it's, to implement all these different variables is pretty difficult for administrators and teachers and...
I would say that whatever we do, whatever we're doing for students, we do for attendees of sports events as well. So if we're in a cluster and kids are wearing masks, then kids should be wearing masks as well.
During play?
During play.
That's, that was the only decipher, as far as basketball and wrestling. That's the only thing I was asking.
No, we were talking, you were talking about spectators.
Yeah. Well, that would be required anyways if you had a cluster or an outbreak. That was already done. It was more just if they're playing basketball or wrestling, would they have to during play?
I think not.
Okay.
I'd say gameplay should be open.
You don't need to vote, it just needs to be a consensus. I just wanted to get a sense. It's just an implementation piece. So all four of you are okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So just to clarify, it, we would, if it goes to a cluster or an outbreak, everyone would be masked if they're within six feet, and we would require the spectators and the folks on the bench to wear them, but when they go in, they can take them off. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have on the COVID piece. Any questions for me? At this point, if folks want vaccinations, they will go to, they'd have to get them on their own. The Holderness is holding one more mobile vaccination site, and then the common man right here will hopefully be able to keep up with the traffic that's in and out of there.
Thank you, by the way.
Yep.
All right. Budget draft number one.
So Tanya is gonna present. She did a wonderful PowerPoint. Instead of going line by line, she's gonna just kind of give you the summary, and then you can look at it. Typically, with draft one, we go over all the possibilities, and we'll give you some scenarios of what you can look at as maybe going without next year, or if you want to keep it in there. Especially around the capital improvement plan, you can defer some of that. So that's just a piece to think about. Obviously, the tax rate is up significantly, so it will be mindful to be looking at that as well, and looking at your revenues. We'll review that as, there will be an increase in adequacy over the next two years, but then we'll dip significantly, which could do this with the tax rate, which is not always a good strategy. So we'll kind of review all the scenarios. If you think about it for a month, come back in January. We can make some decisions on where you want to go, and then the budget hearing is February, so it does move pretty quickly. So feel free to ask questions tonight if you have any, or just think about it, and then come back with any suggestions that you may have too, but we have some as well. Okay?
What does this mean? CIP?
Capital Improvement Plan.
So there are two screens behind me, and over my shoulder, I'm running this one for the, the one that is closest to me for the audience that is here. John is running the one for the virtual participants, okay? If you want to stick with me, those of you who are here, that probably makes the most sense, okay? So, want to let you know what the presentation includes. It includes how draft one was created and an overview of the budget organization. It includes the budget process and timeline, a description of revenue sources, and current estimates for revenue. I encourage you all to know that this is estimates on revenue, okay? None of this is set in stone. It's a, then it will include a fairly detailed descriptions of appropriations by category focused on any changes tonight. So not getting into all of the background, but specifically looking at the changes to line items. And finally, the impact on the assessment and the taxes, because that's where the bulk of our money comes from, okay? You should all have a multi-page white document with grid and a page on the back that says revenue, and that's where really what you should have in your hands, okay? So, the budget process. It's tonight's draft one, and it starts the community conversation. So I really encourage people to participate in this conversation. This is not just a school decision. This is, needs to be a conversation with our entire town about how we are going to continue to keep the school serving kids in the best way possible, and be mindful of the budget impact at the same time. So we need to balance both of those. Tonight, I'm gonna present to the school board for initial review and consultation, and I'll be looking for your direction for subsequent drafts. We have two subsequent board meetings. The 3rd of January at 6:00 PM, we will be back here. And then the 7th of February, we will be back here for the final hearing. And the 7th of March, we will be here for the voting at 7:00 PM in the gymnasium. So those are the dates to remember, okay? Want to tell you about how this budget is created. So I meet with the, I send out a request to the teachers for budget request items. I meet with the special ed director, Kim DeSalvo. I meet with John Francis, the facilities director, and his assistant, Amy Ulrichson. We look at all of the needs for facilities. I meet with Carol LaVassar, our technology director. She gives input on expectations for what we'll need to spend in that area. And through it all, the SAU gives incredible support. I was here yesterday with Dan Rosner, met with Kyla, or spoke with Kyla this morning. So this is a team-produced budget. It is by no means one person, okay? It's a synthesis of all of those conversations. Want to just let folks know that revenue is money that's coming in, and appropriations is the operating budget or the cost of doing business. So just what those words mean, okay? I am going to start with the revenue page, which is the final page here. It's the last page of your budget. Looks like this. And I would like to start at the top of that page, where it says, unreserved fund balance. Unreserved funds are, it's the money that was collected last year but not spent or allocated, okay? The tax bills go out, the money comes in, we didn't spend all of the money that came in. That money becomes a revenue the following year, okay? Sometimes that revenue is used to offset the tax rate. Last year, we had $565,483 of unallocated money, non-allocated money. So that happened at the end of June. The school board made some decisions, as allowed by the townspeople, about what to do with that money. And what you all decided to do in June was to put $293,490 into tax rate. So you took about half of that money and applied it to this year's tax rate, and then you retained a fund balance of $271,993, okay? So that's what's called retained funds. The school board has that money now as a tool. You get to decide then what we're going to do with those monies. One thing that you could do for next year is apply that right now to next year's tax rate. You could take that sum total, or the total of that, or a portion of that, and add to the line item where it says zero under 2022, 2023, unreserved fund balance, and that would significantly impact the bottom line here, okay? That is one of the first things that we have discussed as a way to get as close to zero impact as possible with our operating budget, okay?
So Dan will be here next month to talk you through some options with the unreserved fund balance, maybe committing some of that now so it can reduce the overall increase. And, you know, one of the pieces is that you have an unanticipated revenue coming back from the health insurance that's unanticipated. It came from nowhere, so that's an easy start. So just to be mindful of that for next month.
So as we move down the page, the revenue page, the next section is revenue from state sources. Historically, there was something called CAT aid that has changed to be special ed aid and the adequacy grant that Kyla just spoke about, okay? I want to just say, you know, we think we're gonna be a little bit down in special ed aid next year, about $10,000, you'll notice there. And for the adequacy, we are expecting an increase, okay? That, I don't know exactly how to explain why that's up. The base equation is the same, but the state is sending more money back.
They shifted it for the next two years. They shifted it for the next two years, and then it will dip again.
Is that a statewide increase, or is RL?
Statewide. Statewide, for the most part.
This says 30.
Yeah, I noticed that as well. The special education aid.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
Yep.
It's 30. It's supposed to be 30.
So special ed aid is really for your out-of-district placements, so if they're Medicaid eligible there, and they reach the three and a half times the cap of the tuition, the state is supposed to pay 100% back. We typically get right now at about 62% back of what they qualify for. So it's one of those pieces that we just don't get what's mandated, but we'll get some.
Unfunded mandate. So I'm going to, and there is no security grant anymore, so there's no change in that. Okay? So I want to continue with revenue from federal sources. It's about the same for the National Forest Reserve. However, we are expecting about a $10,000 increase in Medicaid reimbursement. Our special educators do, in this building, do a phenomenal job of submitting for Medicaid reimbursement, so that's fantastic.
And Medicaid is for any child with an IEP who's Medicaid eligible. We can recoup for some of those services.
So moving down to local revenue other than taxes. The first section you see there is regular ed tuition. We are expecting that to go down a little bit there. Fewer students coming from Ellsworth, basically, is how, or from out-of-district towns, towns that are not a part of our school. Special ed tuition, we expect to be about the same. Okay? And then I want to draw your attention to the preschool assist, which is line 1349, on the left-hand side, account 1349, and I want to draw your attention down to the IDEA grant under the federal funds at the same time. Okay? We no longer have a consolidated IDEA grant for all of the SAU schools. All schools in the SAU are divided up at this point, and there are separate grants for each school.
And that was dictated by the state. Typically, we used to be able to write a consolidated grant, and now they're saying you are not allowed to do that anymore, so each is, which impacts Plymouth quite a bit.
So the two, that IDEA grant used to fund, and will continue to fund in a different way, a lot of our preschool, I think 100% of our preschool. So there is a combined change and some shifting between the IDEA grant down below and the preschool assist line up above. Okay? And I can speak more to the specifics of that later on. I'm going to move us over to other local revenue. There are essentially no earnings on investments expected. Our parent tuition, which is the PEP tuition line there, you'll notice, is expected to be down about $10,000. We have reduced parent enrollment in our preschool program, so we're down by a pretty considerable lumber of parent-placed preschool students at this point. Bilingual services has changed from being a contracted service provider to staff people, staff services. We then bill those services out to the other elementary schools. You'll remember that. We've discussed that this fall. Thus, we get some revenue back in to offset the costs that we shoulder to have bilingual services within the district. Okay?
Just to be clear.
Yep.
So we hired that person, and then you bill it to other schools?
Yep.
But that was going to be an extra FTE position over here in the budget, too?
Correct. But you'll see it balanced out on the revenue side.
Okay. And then the capital reserve fund. A year ago, there was a Warren article to move $50,000 in of the unspent funds at the end of the year. And if there were unspent funds, the taxpayers allowed you to do that, and you did, we did that last year. So that would need to be another Warren article if you wanted to continue to do that, so we have that at zero at this point. Okay? Any questions?
Just, are you talking about the $50,000, the second from the bottom, under local revenue? But that was in the budget. Am I thinking about this the right way? We put it into capital reserve, right?
So it was a revenue from last year. It was a revenue into last year's.
Yeah. Okay. I guess additional money is, it would have been in the unreserved fund balance had it not been put into the capital.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense.
And it had not been allocated in the operating budget. Federal fund revenue. So I put mine in order of number, because that's how my brain works. We are expecting about the same in Title I reimbursement, and the same in Title II reimbursement as well.
Both federal grants.
Both federal grants. Okay?
So nothing for Title II?
Correct.
At this point, correct. So then the IDEA grant, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that's what I was speaking about before with the change of revenue. So we are expecting a decrease in that, because it's not a consolidated grant anymore. Okay? We used to, it comes out in the wash, but because it goes directly to the preschool rather than to the whole building. Okay? The whole school. It is a little. The food service revenue, I spoke with Dan about this. He's estimating that will be up about $15,000 in food service revenue, but that is all based on what we are contracted to pay to the food service program. So that's not revenue to help us educate the kids, it's revenue to help us feed the kids. It funds itself. Okay? So in summary, the projected difference is $180,594. It's down. Our revenue is expected to be down next year unless we look at that, those retained funds, and apply them to the unreserved fund balance for next year.
So we'll look at some solutions to that, to kind of help you out with that side of things for next month.
It's, you know, it's not just one line item here, the regular ed tuition is expected to be down, the reduction in the PEP tuition, the IDEA reduction of $70,000, plus the amount of the $50,000 that was moved to the capital reserve fund creates a very inconsistent picture and a tool. So a question this group needs to ask itself is, do you want to try to have a stabilized tax rate, or do you want to always give all the money back to the taxpayers? You know, it's a question of how you're going to handle those funds. Okay? We are ready to move. Does anyone have any questions about revenue?
I have one question.
Yep.
So you said IDEA, IDEA is now going directly to preschool?
Right. Preschool assist tuition, where it says?
So there's a portion of the IDEA grant. What part of it is for the K-12, part of it is for preschool specifically. So we're talking specifically to the preschool allocation is the part that we needed to split up.
It's up $97,000.
So does the total amount that we get under this grant change now for the upgrades, or is it reduced by a certain amount? Because you said it comes out in wash, so I was assuming that if it goes directly to the preschool, the remainder of the money is available for the rest of the school, or did I not understand that?
It's a difference of $17,000. It's a little less for the whole school. Absolutely. Okay? Other questions about revenue? Okay. So we're going to move to appropriations. So as you're looking at the multi-page document, move left to right. The first column is the account number in each function area. The second column is the description, then for the title. The next three columns all relate to fiscal year 2020, '21, which was last year. So it gives you the adopted budget, the adjusted budget, and the actual expenses for last year. Then there is this year's '21, '22 adopted budget. We do not have actual expenses for this year, because we have to work through the entire year before we will know the actuals. Right? Then there is the proposed budget for '21, '22 of draft one, which is next year's budget.
'22, '23.
'22, '23. Sorry. Yes. Finally, on the far, there's a section for differences. The difference, are we up or down in each line item? And finally, there's a little description of a couple of characters for each line item. So the first function area is function 1100. This is regular education. You'll see 1100 under the account number. That entire top half of the section, top half of page one is regular education. Okay? Some of the highlights on this, on this section, are that we continue to estimate that we will need 32.6 full-time instructors, and the increase there, the difference of $9,073 is due to the CBA steps. Okay? Then you'll notice down at line 12, account number 110641 is printed media, and that we expect to be a decrease of $24,131. The reason for that is that we prepaid for a lot of math consumables over the course of the last two years. Remember, we adopted a new math program as a part of the taking that on. We spent a lot of money to adopt that new program. Okay? And then down at line 16, which is account number 110734, is new computers. We are expecting that to be up $11,600.
That's part of your tech plan in replacement of equipment.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we were taking all this money that we got from the government, so we were using that for Chromebooks.
We did, which is another reason why that's up a little bit, is we did use a lot of that money.
Previous years.
Previous years, but not moving forward. And we, the plan is to buy about 80 new Chromebooks each year to handle the new students who move in, and because we also need replacements for our Chromebooks, because.
Yeah.
And there's no grants that, for Chromebooks?
You've covered some of it with grants, but this is the local piece.
It's become a standard thing that is harder to find with grants.
Yeah.
But I do recall, this is, I mean, I think we've talked about Chromebook replacement several times in the past years, and it's just kind of one of those things that we have budget for. So we know definitely how much lifespan we get out of a single, out of Chromebooks before we retire them.
Five years.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Five years if gently used.
Yeah. Five years is actually.
Yeah.
It's not supported. Right.
I do want to draw your attention to the fact that in the FTEs, we did reduce our teaching staff by one this past year. We had two retirements, you'll remember, and we only filled one of those positions. Okay? Which, the way that we've managed that within the building is to have a combined classroom in the K-1, which has been working out very well. But, so I do want to just say that we have had a recent reduction in staffing. That relates to our enrollment. We are predicting about 370 students here next year. You'll notice that over the course of the last 10 or 11 years, it's held pretty consistently at just under 400 students. Our anticipated grade level enrollment for next year is on the screen behind me. We are expecting about 35 students in kindergarten, but that is a very hard number to predict at this time of year. You'll notice that we are expecting two grades next year to have about 30 students in them. So we will continue with at least one combined class. There's some question about where we do that, and we will manage that in the spring. Okay?
So Tanya, besides that combined, every other grade level has three classroom teachers. Is that correct?
Except our current 4th grade and next year's 5th grade is expected to be in two groups, two homerooms.
And current grade one is, well, current grade one is two sections plus a half?
Plus a half, correct.
And can you hear this?
Two sections and a half. So the next section is 1101, which is substitutes. We are proposing an increase of $5,000 there. You'll notice the actual expenses in 2020 were considerably larger. Those were due to maternity leaves, and we are going to again use a number of long-term substitutes this year. And you raised the sub-rate. So we are proposing a very modest increase there of $5,000. So the next section, which is on page two, is special education, which is function area 1200. Okay? And you'll see at the top of page two, we are continuing to propose six full-time employees. And because of some staffing changes there, we are expecting to be down a little, about $10,000, $9,936 in the salary line item. If you draw your eyes down to line 49, which is account number 1210569, that is the tuition line item, and based on our current student population and the, and students who are in out-of-district placement, we are proposing an increase of $15,815. So.
That's directly tied to IEPs, so it's out of, those are your out-of-district students. So whether they're hospitalized or involved with DCYF and have an IEP, or placed out of district, that's where that, all that goes in that line.
In addition, I just want to check one thing here.
And that tuition is not something that we have any control over?
No control.
It has to be provided?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure of that. Everybody knows that.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question on that.
Most of your 1200 accounts, there's not a lot of, there's no flexibility.
Yeah.
Which is your special ed.
So there's, I see another mistake on the slide, which I need to change. But the purchase professional is, we are proposing it to be down $3,665, and that is, you know, after I meet with Kim DeSalvo, we go through all of the student needs in the building, and we are expecting that to be down a little bit. There had been a fairly significant increase of that recently, and that's where we are right now. Okay? I want to draw your eyes down to new equipment and new furniture, or software and new furniture. We are proposing an increase of $3,000 for an additional TopCat. We, TopCats are audio systems that are hardwired right into the classroom, and we have, we will have a need for more of that as we move forward. I wanted to report out on special ed enrollment history. So over my shoulder is the enrollment history of, for special education, and that, as you can see, is again continuing to be pretty steady over the course of the last 10 or 11 years. Okay? Which matches our school-wide enrollment, and so our percentage is about the same every year of students identified with special learning needs. Now I'm going to bring you to special ed aids, which is 1212, function 1212, and it's down at line 62 on page two, and the biggest. And the biggest increase here is in the salary line item. We are proposing the exact same number of full-time employees of 20 for next year. It's an increase there in salaries of $8,931. That's based on the collective bargaining agreement, okay? At this point, I'm going to bring you over to special ed secretary, which is at the bottom of page two. Again, there, we have a half-time special ed secretary. There's also a increase in the salary there based on the collective bargaining agreement. At this point, we can move over to page three, which is, at the top of page three, you will see extended school year. There, there are a couple of different increases there in salaries and purchase professional or contracted service costs, okay? $1,434 increase for the salaries for extended school year and $2,861 increase for purchase professional.
This is summer school?
That is.
For students with IEPs.
For students with IEPs, okay? Which we call extended school year because it's different in our head, in our brains than summer school.
But it's still part of the 1200 account number, which is still.
Special education. Yep. And IEP-driven.
Yep.
Okay. So then, on the right-hand side is of the, of the slide above my left shoulder, is bilingual education. It's function 1260. And I had already talked about this on the revenue page, and we had talked, we have discussed it in previous board meetings. So the change, we've moved this from a contracted service provider to a salaried employee. And as we said, PES then bills out to the other schools in the district. It's about 50% of the salary is billed to the other, other SAU districts. So it's a net change of $6,959 total between, because there's a revenue to offset the, the increase in the salary line. Do you have a question about that?
We talked about that when we added the position at the beginning of the year. So it's a wash.
Yeah, that actually, so we're only spending an additional $30,000 in that section, but we're anticipating revenues of?
So we put in for the revenue.
Like 50,000, so this is $20,000 capital positive?
Yeah, $48,365, so.
Can I just, Warren, this and Whitford?
All of the others.
All the, all the SAU schools.
All of the other SAU schools. But we do use the, the biggest bulk. We use about 50% of the services.
What's that, Fran?
It just says revenue from HSD and WSD, so. If this is going out to the public eventually, maybe.
In the notes? Are you talking about the notes?
Yeah, in the description.
Yeah, so.
So they won't think it's just a two-school, it's?
Yeah, it's all SAU schools, yeah.
Including the high school.
Yep.
Okay. So at then, we are to function 410, or 1410, 1420, and 1490, which is co-curricular, school-sponsored athletics and summer school. And there are no proposed changes in this draft, okay? So we are expecting to.
That's part of this collective bargaining agreement.
Right. We do, at the top of, I believe it's your page four. It might, I'm not sure, because we have different versions, but is the after-school program.
Yep.
So we are, again, proposing no change. We will, we will continue to fund that at the same rate that we've been funding it for about $30,000, for $30,000 exactly.
That was originally voted on by a Warren article, and then it just continues to stay the same.
Yeah.
My understanding is that the after-school program has been shortened in duration from when we decided to fund it at this level. Do we know what the, do we have any updates on what Parks and Rec is planning to do with after-school program? Are they planning to continue to do?
I believe that they are contin, I could, I could find that out for the next board meeting. I believe that they are contin, uh, think that they will continue to do it at, at the rate they're doing it at this point. But I could ask.
Yeah.
I know they're going through a restructuring there.
I'm no longer a parent of a child who uses that service, so I feel somewhat out of the loop on that. But I heard that there had been some changes in the past year. I just wasn't sure, you know, you're familiar?
Yeah, so they don't have after-school program on Fridays. So it's only a four-day.
Aren't they also releasing it 4:30 instead of 5?
And, yeah, 4:30.
So it's, I mean, it's shortened in duration by 25% and one day a week, but there's another 20%.
Yeah, so I'd be get, interested to find out what their plan is for next year.
Granted, there was a lot of community support for funding for the program. So I'm not questioning changing that, but, you know, curious to know if.
I'm sure the staffing costs have gone up as well, even with less of a service, because it's been the same.
Yeah. I know, I know it's a valuable service.
Tonya can find clarification around that piece.
So at that point, I, is, I'm going to bring you over to preschool, or down to preschool, which is function 1840. We are proposing 1.8 full-time, full-time teachers and one full-time para educator and two part-time paras. There has been a staffing change within the preschool program. So we are expecting a decrease of $4,691 in the preschool salary line item.
Is that just because of new staff, is it a lower staff?
Staff exchange, yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, we, there is an increase in the purchase professional and technical services. We will need some contracted service providers for some of the students who are involved, who are enrolled in our preschool.
And do we have to do a special ed or?
Yep. As well as the supplies, travel, and technology needs of our preschool students, that, those needs have gone up. So there is an increase in those line items. You'll see 1840, 610, 580, and 735 at the bottom of the preschool section there.
What, you can travel for bus services, I'm assuming?
Travel and travel to other, of our staff people to other preschools. Okay? So in the middle of, of that page, guidance services, 2120, we are continuing to propose a full-time teacher. And then, I'm going to, there are no significant changes within guidance services besides that, or in appraisal services, or in medical services. However, I'm going to bring you down to school nurse. As you know, we contract our school nurse through Sphere.
Hold on.
How come, how come the guidance salary didn't go up?
If, if a personnel is on the top step, then that still needs to be negotiated.
And is that position part of the collective bargaining?
Yep, yes. Going down to school nurse, which is function 2134. I'd take, like to take a moment to just do a shout-out for Nurse Sandy. Wow, is she fantastic. There is an increase in our services, which is $2,690 for purchase professional services.
So that, that's not just the salary. I always like to add that in there. That includes the supervision, the professional development. Everything that has to do with the nursing is in that number. Substitutes, everything is covered with that piece.
Okay, so down at the bottom is psychological services. It's function 2143. You'll notice an increase here. There's a staffing change, a retirement in, in here. And we are proposing a budget that is our worst-case scenario, basically, for the funding impact. So we, we need to propose a budget that would cover full, five-day-a-week services from a psychologist. And there will be conversation we have in the spring about whether or not that is a salaried position or continues to be a contracted service provider.
Right now, it's a contracted service provider based on the caseload. And the rate is a little bit, that, that the contracted service provider charges Plymouth is significantly lower than most agencies. So this is just the agency cost of what's the going rate is for psychologists at this point. So we'll be looking at that.
Because she's independent.
So this is not the contracted position that we have currently? You guys want to build it into the budget as an actual?
We're going to look at the, we're going to look at the, this is worse, this is based on a, using an agency, but we may be able to, if there's, we may put it out there for an in-house person where we may have some savings. If there's a candidate, it's, it's a, it's a difficult position to find. There's, it's a shortage of school psychologists, so.
If we, we'll go through an agency, there's overhead cost.
Yeah.
That's different.
But the present person is independent provider.
Right, I understand, but I always, in the years past, I had questioned that. And I was always told that it was less expensive for the district to contract that position than it would be to have a full-time position in-house. I mean, obviously, needs have changed based on, you know, kids' mental health, so I, I understand.
But that's true with that specific contractor.
Yeah.
That's what, you're, you're, you're losing that whole agency with the person.
Yeah.
So.
And if you were to hire somebody, they're going to be at the top of the, and you're going to have to pay.
With the degrees that they have, yeah.
Right.
And everything else, so it's going to be.
We're trying to, to give a number that's.
Accurate.
Acc, as accurate as possible, okay? So we are now going to move to speech pathology, which are, its function areas 2152 and 2159. So we will continue, we are proposing two full-time employees, one through preschool and one through the K8 building. Based on step increases, there would be an increase there of $2,549 under 2152-110. And then down in the speech pathology aid line item, there would be an increase of $1,994. So that is a combined increase of $4,543.
But it's the same staffing, based on the IEPs.
Okay. Then, moving down to function area 2162, which is physical therapy services. Based on our, the current students we have, we are expecting an increase of $2,042 for our purchase professional contracted services. And in the area of occupational therapy, again, we are expecting an increase up to 7,500, an additional $7,565.
Is that based on numbers or the rate?
Combination and an increase of a coda one day a week here. So needs, mostly needs.
And this is contracted out?
Correct.
Yes, through Dunston.
Through an agency.
Yeah, Dunston, right?
Yep.
Same with physical therapy.
So support services, there's zero change, zero dollars. And instruction and curriculum, there's zero dollars and zero change. Which brings us to function area 2213, 2213, which is instructional staff training. We are thinking there will be zero change. We can, will continue to have an operating budget of $50,000 in that area.
What does that cover, Tonya?
Classes that teachers take for the CBA, we reimburse.
Classes, workshops, on your professional development.
Workshops, all of the, a portion of the summer training that we do if we bring in a specialist, okay?
I suspect the actual expenses from 2021 are lower than normal based on.
You couldn't go anywhere.
Right.
So anything offered was only online, so it was cheaper.
Much cheaper.
I'm trying to think about, you know, do we need to carry less? But in reality, that number, that 2021 actual expenses was probably artificially low because nobody was traveling.
I think that you're very, very accurate with that picture.
Right, so let's carry 15?
Yep. School library, we will continue to have a full-time librarian, and there will be an increase of $4,020.
Can I just ask a question? I'm looking like, the special ed salary, I don't know. It seems like proportionately a large amount for one person, you know?
What line are you looking at?
Library salary?
The school, the special ed or the school?
You said special ed, but you, but I think you're talking about library.
Sorry, library.
That's one person, yeah.
I know, I'm just saying.
So it's not just a step, I think that there's.
It could be a track change as well.
Okay. Because I'm just saying, like, proportionately to the other's salary, that seems like it was a huge.
So if a teacher's, yeah, they have a master's degree or they can put in for a track change.
Oh, okay.
And that's initiated through the CBA?
That's all part of your CBA, yeah.
So audiovisual services, there's a minor increase there. That's about the same, but if we move down to, oh, we, we, hold on, we're out of order here.
I was going to say, audiovisual services is down?
Down, yep. Supervision of the school board services, there's no, no expected change there. And no dollars and no change for the school board secretary. Moving to function 2313, which is the treasurer, zero change in that area. And under 2314, 2314, no changes there as well. There is a 15, or 1,500, $1,500 increase to the audit, the cost of our books being audited, which is a very positive thing. We like to have our books be audited and checked and make sure we're doing things legally.
And it's required.
And it's required, but the cost also went up. And the cost also went up.
And CPAs are.
So it's, it's interesting, the cost went up because Plymouth District received so many federal funds this year because of the COVID relief money. So that's, there's more auditing that needs to be done, given the amount of money that Plymouth was given.
So.
We should give that money back.
I think we benefit more than the preschools. Zero changes in our proposed budget in the legal section, which is 2318. And we're down $1,000 in the contingency line item. We had adopted $1,000. We're not proposing that at this point. And then, we get to the office of the superintendents, which is function 2321. And there is an increase there of $12,866. I'd like to take a moment to just let everyone know, sort of a brief summary of services that we get at the school and the, and the taxpayers get from the support of the SAU. We receive fiscal services, I mean, there's a long list of things there. These are just the largest, largest areas where we receive support on a daily basis from the SAU office.
And then, just to, just another piece on this. Most of the increase is from, just from, we're basically just personnel for the most part. We had to add in a portion of the out-of-district coordinator. And that is increased because that comes right from the IDEA grant. So we added a portion of that into our budget, and then it will be washed out through revenue. But you do see an increase with that piece. We are not adding any staff, we are as is.
Do you mean because of the allocation of the special ed fund? Got to put her?
Yeah, so we put her in the SAU budget, a portion of that piece. And that's for any out-of-district coordinator. And then, it's your, it's your portion with the ADM, split cost with the assessment, equalized assessment.
So each of the elementary schools and the high school are paying a similar increase on their.
There, yep, it depends on, on your net assessed valuation and the ADM, yeah.
I would like to say that we do get a great, as a board, we have great service from the SAU. And I find that to be a great value of being able to make good decisions for the school districts.
Thank you.
I will speak to the board as well.
Great.
I think Kelly and I would do the same, hour-by-hour basis, so thank you. So that, this brings us to technology coordination. So that, this brings us to technology coordination, which is function 2331. And there is a slight increase for the FTE there of $3,510, which is a 3% increase for technology coordination.
So it's a non-contract, it's not in the union, so that's what we're doing across the board this year, 3%, unless you'd like to change it.
Say that again.
Unless you'd like to shift it, so we're recommending three.
Which brings us to.
But that's just something to think about.
Yeah.
The principal's office has two full-time employees, and there is an increase of $3,914 under 2410-110. And an increase in some postage and, but other than that, we are expecting our front office to be able to run at the same, same staffing and same cost. The secretarial services, which is 2.5 full-time employees, there is again, an increase based on the CBA for some of those positions of $2,920 proposed, okay? Which brings us down to operating building services, which is function 2610. We have four, four full-time employees, and they, some of them are part of the collective bargaining agreement, and that is five, an increase of $5,762, okay? And then down, function 2620-340, which is technical services, you'll notice an increase of $1,998. We've had to move all of our off-site storage, and our crew did that this past Saturday, but it's an increase of cost, so that is all of that increase.
And that's networking, it's not like a storage unit. It's, it's infrastructure.
Yes.
Can we go back to the operating building?
Yep.
The core is ma, the maintenance?
All the custodial staff.
Okay, and so you have there, I don't see anywhere there's substitutes or fill-ins and somebody's out. The people who are here cover what they need to cover?
Yeah, we'll just contract, we usually contract that out, and it just washes out in the end.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or it comes out of our substitute. Yep. Like to draw your attention to, there's a $3,000 increase in our water and sewage use, that's due to the irrigation costs and the cost of water. There is a decrease of, expected of $7,500 in disposal services. And we are proposing that based on the cost. You'll notice the cost over in actual expenses for 2020, 2021. So we think we are running that line higher than we needed to run that line. You with me? Repairs and maintenance, everything is costing a little bit more money. So we are, we are predicting an increase of about $6,000 just for the general repairs and maintenance.
This is not capital or special projects, this is just everyday.
Yes.
And the availability of.
Did you say that, I was looking at another line about the fuel costs and.
So I'm coming to that. So still in function area 2620. So property and liability, we are expecting, based on the current rates, for that to be up $2,085. Then if you go down to electricity, which is 262622, we are, John and Amy are thinking that we will be down $2,500. We're in a four-year contract, remember we did the LED lights? So we're in a four-year contract, and they are thinking that that will be down about $2,500.
And if you look at the expenses from, or the, what you had in 2021, you see the savings right to the right of that over time.
And then directly under that is the fuel oil. So fuel oil costs are going up. We are proposing an increase at this line item of $12,500. You'll know, you may know that we are one of only two schools in the district that have not gone to wood or propane, so oil costs are, are up. Software line item is up $2,500 based, we're not increasing the number of software programs we are running, but the cost of those programs is going up, okay?
Annual licensing?
Yes. Right. Little bit farther down, still in this function area, account number 735, which is replacement of equipment, there is a vacuum cleaner that needs to be replaced, so we are proposing $3,000. Remember last year, we used some funds to offset the cost of what the equipment that we bought last year, which was a scrubber. Then directly under that, for account number 738, is a decrease of $52,389. We did a huge networking project last year, so we are proposing or thinking that we will have much smaller costs there, but there will be cost to servers, switchers and, switches and projectors.
And those numbers are reflected at the, kind of two-thirds of the way down on your CIP plan, just under networking. It's right, just right in line with what's, what needs to be replaced. The only piece that isn't in that number is the IT support, which is under personnel.
That brings us to care and upkeep of the ground services. So this is our portion of the, of the parks, park and rec. And due to some significant staffing changes in that office, we are thinking we will be down $16,079, okay? But there are some increases in repairs and maintenance of $7,277, and in supplies. You know, it's harder and costs more to get things repaired. So, you know.
Same with the grounds.
We gain a little, we lose a little. So I'm going to move us at this point, you're getting near the end, everyone, to transportation. There are four areas under student transportation. There's regular education, special education, athletics, and field trips. And we are in the second year of a contract with Durham Transport, or we will be, we're in the first year of that contract this year, next year will be the second year of that contract. So that contract will mean that we have an increase of $4,536 in regular ed and $7,540 in special education, and that is directly related to the contract that we have.
Is Durham doing the special ed transport?
The bulk of it.
They do some of it, so that's a combination of Durham and.
Private.
And private.
Function 2800 is our school resource officer, it's our support services. And it, so this line item includes the oversight for this, for our school resource officer, and it's our portion of our school resource officer and the, and the services of supervision.
It's tied right to their C, collective bargaining agreement.
And this is split by.
Yep, correct. That's $5,391 for that line item, function area.
Are you still finding value in that service?
Huge value.
It sounded like the first couple of years, it was a great benefit. And the high school as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. So this food service supervision is, you know, there's a zero difference, zero change in that. We, that's now a contracted service provider. I want to draw your attention at this point to account, function area 4600, okay? So 4600-450, one thing that is represented in your CIP that looks like this, that Kyla gave you, is a renovation of this library. We were able to do the rug this past summer with some funds, but as a part of our capital improvement plan, we would be looking at new seating, possibly glassing in the area, the entire area, and new shelving units. We, if we went ahead with that project, it would be $231,999. That is the estimate, a brief overview of what that would cost.
Just quickly, so if you look at your CIP plan and the total under the 22, 23 year, that is the total. When speaking with John Francis, both these projects listed in here, both the library and the interior fire door upgrades can be deferred. So given the tax increase this year, you can cut that whole line and possibly look at using eventually some of the money from your newly started capital reserve fund as far as getting some of these projects done.
You can cut which, which did you?
The entire $232,000. It's not, it's just reflective of your CIP, and for this year, you may want to consider.
Are the fire doors functioning, or is there a need?
They function. He said you can defer both, but it's just important to kind of put your CIP out there, because once you defer, it just gets added to.
Yeah, but looking at it, you know, looking at the bottom line.
Yep.
Expenditures for 2024, 25, 2526 are fairly low. You know, we could, my, my recommendation would be to defer this out two or three years and put some money into the CIP so that we're level funding.
You could almost make that decision now, it would give you very minimal increase, just in appropriations. If we do some work on the revenue side, that would be, I think, very helpful, given the.
Can we discuss all these? We're going to decide this right for second.
No, you could, I mean, you, you can wait.
And I thought that some of our COVID money was covering some of these larger projects.
The library, no. That's the piece that it isn't, but some of the, the HVAC projects, absolutely, that's the, that's the majority of the cost.
Okay.
Those big, huge projects that we are able, we're going to be able to take right off the list.
Yeah, okay.
I think given our tax rate, the tax rate increase we've seen this year, I would rather get a couple more years of use out of what seems to be a functioning library.
I agree, I agree with that.
And you may have some savings, you know, you may have some funds at the end of the year, if a, if a student moves out, that you might be able to do the doors eventually, like you did with the painting last year.
Or the carpets.
Or the carpets.
We can do the same, you know, we can have a warrant article to, you know, if we have excess funds, we can put it in the C.
Right, right, which is the.
So I'll bring those to the next, I'm going to, I'm going to bring the draft warrant to the next meeting, so you can discuss both in conjunction with, with that piece. But I think there's a lot of flexibility here to not really have any impact to the tax. Yep.
An impact, not, no impact on programming or no impact on the tax rate.
Well, just an increase.
Or very small, yeah. Okay. So that brings us down to debt services, there's zero change there. You notice we, we pay a little bit less in principal and then a little bit more in interest, so it's, it's the same, comes out to, it comes out to be the same, zero change in debt services. So the capital reserve fund, which is 5251-952, building improvements. So last year, in the adopted budget, we put $50,000 into the capital improvement fund, and we are not proposing that at this point. It would need to be a warrant article if you wanted to go ahead and do that.
If you continue to do that, you could also create a warrant article to get one of the projects done, or not. So it's, you have some options with those projects.
That brings us down to just the health insurance and dental insurance summary. So based on the current rates, we're expecting those to be a decrease of $36,176 in health insurance and a decrease of $408 in dental insurance. So that's some significant savings.
So that's not part of the salary, I mean, the regular ed?
It's the reimbursement.
What's that, Fran?
The health insurance summary.
The health insurance is separated out and dental? I didn't realize.
Yeah, so, so we ended up putting that in one line item. Because you, because we used to have it in by line, and some of your lines are connected to one person, and so that's a confident, that's a, that's a confidentiality piece. So it's, that's the summary of everyone. So that can be, you know, that can be even new folks coming in and changing plans.
Interesting, okay.
That's faculty support.
Everybody.
Everyone, admin.
And this is based on whether.
To be targeted towards one person.
Current plans, yeah. Current staffing and current plans.
Okay.
Okay. So that, as draft one is written, that is a total of $9,689,134, which is an increase of 3.1%. As we've discussed, there are a couple of significant areas where you could impact that increase, okay?
So you have, you have some really good options, I think, to bring that, yeah.
Is the majority of that.
So.
It's only, if you take out improvements, $59,290.
And I think we can do some work on the revenue side too, to bring that number down.
Yeah. So are we sort of all in agreement to remove the capital?
You can decide on that now, and then I can come back with a better number for you for appropriations. And you have less decisions to make.
Yeah, we want to remove that.
I can't imagine if you might have any objection to that.
He's on, so we can ask him.
Hey, Mike?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, if you want us to make a motion to, do we have to make a motion to remove?
No, you could just have consensus, moving into draft two.
I mean, this, the next, it's a draft.
It's a working.
The next one is going to be for, well, we've still got two more meetings before the lobby hearing, so, but it'd be nice to get.
It'd be nice to get closer.
Yeah.
This way you can just work on the revenue side and your warrant articles for next time and any other minor changes.
I do think it would be good to have the conditional funding of the capital improvement program or capital reserve fund if there's funding at the end of the year, which is how we did this last time.
That's been a warrant article for the past couple of years, any leftover money.
You have some funds in there, so it's safe, you wanted to do the doors for $32,000, you just put it on to withdraw. And you already have that, and that wouldn't raise, have any taxation to it.
Well, the other thing we could do is, my understanding is, we could pay for the fire doors out of the 271,000 that the voters authorized us to have discretionary as well.
So.
We could, but.
There's, there's definitely.
I'd rather look at giving that back to the tax, like at this point, I'd rather just offset the tax rate a little bit. But honestly, in the eyes team of our economy, like 3% increase this year is, doesn't scare me, but at the same time, you know, we've had significant increases the past few years that I think we can mitigate.
You also have a teacher's contract that you're putting on the warrant, warrant as well, eventually.
Yeah.
It's the accumulation.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I knew that was very thorough.
Tanya is always very thorough.
That's.
Great.
Love that. So I think we have covered the recap through our discussion, so I'm not going to talk about that. I do want to talk a little bit about the assessment. Well, I do want to just point out that the last page of the multi-page white document has function area subtotals, which is certainly a very informative place to look for more information about the function area costs, okay? Regular ed, special ed, building operations, so that's one piece of, one place to look for more information. So assessment is the sum of all the tax bills for the school district, okay? So the local tax, how much does the local tax raise for Plymouth School District, okay? And based in this draft, there was an increase, but we've already begun to address that through the conversation tonight. But I think it is important to be thinking about local tax dollars. That's how we fund education in the state, for the bulk of it, okay? And based on this and the discussion and what I've heard for consensus, I'm going to skip over the change in the district assessment, because we've, you've already said we're going to address some of that, okay? There we go.
Anything else you want us to look at for next month, or you feel like you have a pretty good start on moving ahead? a pretty good start on, um, moving ahead with some options, especially in the revenue side too? Good? Okay.
Didn't really look like we had a lot of.
Changes.
I don't think.
My only concern, I don't wanna, my, I'm a little concerned about a 3% increase, honestly, not being sufficient, but I don't wanna, I'd rather wait until we have a collective bargaining agreement in place before we look at how we fund other positions in the building, but are not certain to that.
Okay.
Mike, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I have a question if I can. So, um, looking at the, you know, Tanya, you, you pointed out that in the last, the last 10 years, it's been relatively stable, slightly less than 400. The assessment obviously does not match that, especially the last couple of years. That's gone up. Any, any thoughts as to why that, like, what is causing all these drivers of cycle inflation and COVID, if there's any trend or, or things that seem to?
76% of our budget is staffing. 76% of our budget is staffing costs and, um, and that is the, the bulk of the increase over the course of the last 10 or 11 years. Not increase of positions, but increases in the, in, um, staff people, the cost of paying people to do their job.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
But it also has to do with the retirement costs when way up.
Last year, we were locked into that 21% in. And that's the same for this year.
But it's also, yep.
The other thing to consider is that, you know, the town's property value assessments that, or assessment gets divided by to figure out the tax rate is kind of fixed for.
Right.
10 years, something like that. I think they only reassess values 10 years and it's, you know, our actual property values are probably going up more than, um, so i- if they were to do property value assessments every two years, we would probably not see that kind of tax increase. Because the denominator of that tax rate would be going up as well, so.
And there hasn't been a change.
Absolutely. Yep. Not just because the property values have gone up, but that the tax base has, has increased as well. The combination, yep.
Assessment of, of properties in town.
Yep. That's all we have on budget.
Well, thank you. Super thorough. I always appreciate that. All right. Um, and you gave us the dates.
Yep, so you're, uh, so typically we have a brief, uh, school board meeting right before, so you don't have to meet twice in that month. So, February 7th for the, uh, district hearing and then for the district meeting, March 7th, both at 7:00 PM.
And we'll have a school board meeting before?
Probably at 6:00.
So, the 7th is the board will meet at 6:00 and then we'll have the hearing at 7:00?
And we're still on for January 3rd without any?
Still on for January 3rd.
I'm gonna try to zoom in.
Okay.
Okay.
Make sure you're wearing a key.
I know, for real. All right, and there's no other business?
Uh, no.
Do you want to?
What? What?
I do want to, for, for now, or wait for the next meeting?
We're only at 10:00 next meeting. Let people digest it all.
I agree.
And then come up with their questions. Because you don't have any.
Oh, I agree.
That's exactly right. All right, so, um, you guys all signed?
Did the, did everybody sign the?
Yeah.
Great.
No course lines. Okay, all clear of that. All right.